It is four o'clock and the Carroll City Council Workshop is in session. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. Noah signed up.
Okay. Let's move to the Community Improvements Project Update.
Mayor and Council, we've got a number of projects, as you well know, that are active across the community on a bunch of different fronts. Mr. Stuart Barron will brief you guys and tag team with a couple other staff members. So, Mr. Barron, if you want to go ahead and come to podiums.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Here today to talk to or bring you up to speed a little bit on our CIP projects where we're at. Cal's passing out the overall list there of the roughly thirty projects that were that are ongoing for us that are that we're tracking for you. Once we get that, we'll get started. Don't walk it through and answer any questions along the way. The first four projects that you'll see there are all about our streets, the crack seal, flurry seal, street reconstruction, and the base repair. Those are ongoing right now. We have the crack seal is is going to be was supposed to start in November, but it hasn't started yet. We're waiting for that contractor to come on site and they'll be working through that process after that. On top of that, so things have been a little bit off balance this year. You'll see you'll hear a lot of that as we're going through this presentation from getting supplies to getting hardware to to materials for people showing up. So some of those things are behind. Brings us down to Westminster. Westminster is actually under under design for the utility parts, so what we're going to do there is fix all the utilities that are under the street first, and then we'll fix or pour the or pour lay the street over the top of that. So we are having to relocate or not relocate, but to repair some old wastewater lines. The manholes are still in good shape, but the lines are not, so we're going to replace those and then we'll also do the water main. Coming to find out that that was next to an old quarry and everything underground there is in solid rock, so it's been a little bit of difficult to kind of get that going and make that progress.
Wait, there's a quarry where Westminster is?
Apparently it was where the old playground is kind of one block over. Is that right? I don't remember the name of the park over there.
B.C. Richards.
It's B.C. Richards. So just an interesting old fact that I didn't know either. So the that brings us down to the Olympic Drive Extension. The Olympic Drive is about ninety-nine percent done. We are looking at the intersection of Singing Wind and Olympic Drive and trying to try to clean that up a little bit. It's very busy right now in the morning and there is some confusion on the driveways there, so we're looking at is there anything that we can do there before we really close that out?
So I I think we probably all have. I'll speak for myself. I had several people bring that to my attention. And not only that, just having experienced it as maybe probably many of us have just in in those times. So what what is the thought process and where is that?
So we're just kicking around a few different options there. The schools ask us to look at some crosswalks in that area and and, you know, their driveway is very close to that intersection in in the little peninsula.
That makes a hu- it makes it really, really hard.
Yeah, so we're we're working with them and trying to come up with some solutions that'll work for them and for us. We've thought about even a three-way stop at one time, but the majority of the traffic happens right in the morning. And so we were in the mind that, hey, you know, we don't necessarily want to stop traffic there all day to to fix the problem. It does, but it's really intense in the morning, so we're not going to rule it out.
Pickup in the afternoon is pretty bad, too, because the because it's it's when you're coming from Loop 534 and you're trying to turn on like if you're trying to go up to Olympic to go up to the junior high and then the cars that are trying to turn left to do the same thing. And then you've got a line of cars that are trying to turn left and then turn back into in Daniels or, you know, turn and then go up Olympic to pick up at school. Yeah, it's it's pretty.
It's a mess.
It's pretty bad.
So we're working with the school. We want to do something that'll work good with their entrance to have that old bus.
Do you think they might look at doing a different drop-off pattern for where they where they actually?
We're talking to them. We're hopeful.
About different options, yeah.
Is a light at that intersection, Singing Wind and Olympic, is is a light there? Something that might?
Just for cost. We're going to try a few different things. We always try the least expensive thing and then kind of escalate that up to to what we to a to a good fix. And so we want to kick around a few ideas before we get a lot. The light fixes just about any intersection. Problem is, they're about, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars. And so if there's something you can do short of that, then then that's what we would like to do first.
Okay, good.
Okay. I'm going to skip on down to number nine there, the Take It Easy Drainage Ditch Improvement. We have gone out to bid for that. We have hired a contractor and met with them. We had the pre-construction meeting and so they're getting ready to start work over there. So that'll be from Highway twenty-seven down to Guadalupe Street.
And what will that look like as far as construction goes? Like road closures or lane closures?
Nothing on twenty-seven for us. Later on, Tech Stop will come back in after we're after we've started our process and then our, excuse me, project. Then they're going to lower their culverts on Highway twenty-seven. That will they're not they're going to do that. I think it's lighted for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so it's still wild.
We're not in the road right now with our project. We're aside from the road and so.
Are you all starting on Lower Street or what do you what are you?
We'll start from twenty-seven and then go to Guadalupe.
Okay, so nothing on Lewis yet?
Not yet. Though it'll be a three-phase project. Starting if you start at the river, you know, we start on the downstream side. We work up to twenty-seven is phase one from the river to Highway twenty-seven. Across twenty-seven will be a Tech Stop project. That'll be phase two. And then from twenty-seven to.
Let's go and start in the opposite direction from you. Okay. All right.
That way you can fall right as and you're fixing it as you go instead of running into a wall where the water is going to.
Anticipated date of start?
Right after the first of the year, they want to start. I think it was the tenth is what he said, January tenth. All of his workers are going to be out of town until then, so.
And the the design for that is not yet complete? Is that right? It says estimated September of this year. Do we have an updated estimate on that?
That was complete.
Okay, it is complete. Okay.
So the the design was complete. You ordered the the project for the twenty-seven to Guadalupe.
It just needs to be marked up on the spreadsheet.
So, yeah, as I said, we'll revise that to to actually show complete.
That's what got me confused.
That's I was just looking. We'll also help this a little bit easier. I was just looking. We'll divide it out because it has been divided by Tech Stop. So we'll make it a little bit easier. So, you know, where the lowest project is, you know, as opposed to where we are with the Tech Stop.
Yeah, these these projects get a lot of interplay between community, probably, you know, they're, you know, the the Westminster project or the the, you know, Olympic Drive project or the twenty-seven project. Those are all good for us to be able to talk to people about, like where it's going on, when it starts, you know. So all the information y'all can ever give us on that's probably, I mean, from my perspective.
Right. And this originally goes back to projects one and two identified on the master plan that we were going to try to do inclusive with Tech Stop Funding Assistance. And that's when Tech Stop basically split this into two separate projects. So we're doing the downstream now.
Okay.
Come back. I think it's July of twenty-two when they're.
Twenty-two, when the next one, okay. So we will try to get the we're going to do a monthly update on this, so we'll have it on our website. And so everybody and then we'll do quarterly updates with y'all as well.
But the initial won't it impact traffic on on either end? It won't on Guadalupe and it won't on twenty-seven?
It it will impact Guadalupe a little bit just from traffic or from construction vehicles going across there. It's very hard to access that channel. And so there will be some times that they'll they'll need to do stuff with traffic there just to get their equipment in and out of that of that channel, so.
But probably not a everything stopped and, yeah.
No repaving or anything like that. You know, it's just going to be just accessing in and out of the in and out of that channel. Okay. Took about Tranquility Island just a little bit. So we've that particular project is is these are the stairs. Okay, so the stairs on Tranquility Island, y'all did the ribbon cutting for that. They've actually started. All of the projects there from the number ten, eleven, and twelve are all hot library projects. And so we're going to do a an update for those at the you're going to have to help me out there. I didn't.
So lighting's on your consent agenda later tonight. That remember that project was split between HVAC and lighting because of the way the nature of the way those bids came in. The HVAC has been initiated. We're just waiting on equipment like the rest of the country. And so I think we're we got another ten weeks, eight to ten weeks.
Right, yeah. The tentative schedule has always been February. I'm not going to be too optimistic in this climate right now that that we're looking at February. I'm hopeful, but your reality is, you know, we don't know until that actually arrives on site. We've been in constant communication with this project and others to get that sequence, to see if there's any deviations. And there's no deviations from the initial award back when we did this in in August.
Are we going to expect the same thing on the lighting part portion of it as well? Do we know how we get in conversation with them about that?
We've had conversations on that and as of the date of the bid opening in at the in mid-November up to this point, they're currently readily available. We do not foresee any issues. Now, once we get into January, after we get bonds, insurance, contract executed, who knows what can change between now and then. But as of right now, no, there will be no delay.
That's what I'm wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Item number thirteen is the A.C. Shriners House. We have met with that architect, the original architect that came up with the I or kind of the price scenarios. And we're looking at doing a design build for that project. A design build is where you kind of know how much money you're going to spend and you go out and hire a team, which is an architect and a builder, to fulfill your your wish list if you can within that budget. And if they can't do it, then they ask, you know, you either ask for more money or you make your budget smaller. And so we're we're looking at a team instead of hiring an architect, the city being the middleman between them and the builder. So that's called a design build as from the state of Texas, and that's where we're at right now. And we're actually going out for the RFP, which will probably be about in the beginning part of twenty-twenty. We'll go out for that and and elect and award that to a to a building team. So that I will go to item number seventeen, which is the Water and Wastewater Master Plan. We have they've come out and done their analysis for us where they they actually put the flow gauges in the in the manholes and then the pressure gauges on our water side to verify that the model actually is operating the same way that the city system is, so we know that it's apples to apples. We anticipate hearing back from them in the spring of twenty-twenty or next spring, twenty-twenty-two, with the kind of the the first draft of the master plan. And then we'll be finishing that up shortly thereafter, kind of mid-summertime, or maybe even early fall to verify all of our needs and the the roadmap for us for the next few years on water and wastewater extensions. So a lot of development happening in the area. This master plan really helps with that. It lets developers know how much capacity that we have in our system, what the water flow is, what the pressures are. So very handy for them as well for as as they're coming into our into our system.
I have a question. The design and the construction estimate dates, the construction date is before the design date. How can that? How does that work?
That that actually doesn't have a contr- I was just looking at that. That actually does not have a construction, so that's just that should.
Okay.
I'll update that one. That was one we're looking at the next line item.
Okay, so it's not applicable there. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
The Loop 534 Ellenberger Well. This is another project that's been kind of dragging on and we're waiting for some hardware pieces to put the well into operation, but we're making all the physical improvements that we can. The well the wellhead is actually in place. The building's over it. We've paved around it. We're waiting for the final pieces of hardware to get here so we can bring it into operation. And we'll be putting that on y'all's ribbon cutting list in the next next round of ribbon cutting, so y'all will be out there looking at it very soon. Water Street Water Line. This is the water line from Washington Street down to Tybee and possibly all the way down to C Street. We're going to place that water line. It is a old tuberculated six-inch cast iron line that needs to be upgraded.
What is the standard now?
Our eight inches are minimum and it's PVC, not not so. Tuberculated means is it it grows rust on the inside of it and the effective diameter of your pipe gets smaller and smaller the older it gets. And so it's probably around a three-inch pipe now instead of a six-inch pipe. And it does get a little bit more brittle, too, and so it wants to break a little bit more, so.
And and you've it's you've got a completion date here. When will that start?
So we went out to bid for that project and and the cost came back in about three times as much as what we were anticipating and it was cost pipe cost. So it's one we've talked about before. We're looking to go back out to bid in February and hopefully bring those prices back down. We're actually seeing some some movement in the market and some stabilization on different things. I know some builders around the area are actually starting to pick up projects and they're moving along. So we're hopeful that, hey, everything's starting to get a little bit back to normal. Think after the first year. Hopefully, it will be and we'll be able to pick these up and and run with them, but things are still. We're having a hard time getting contractors to honor a long-term bid. When I say long-term, thirty days is like really long for them when they their suppliers won't give them more than ten days. So when we go out for a bid and we get it awarded and then we have to go to council, there's a lag time in there. Their their bids are only good for five to ten days from their contractors and we ask them for at least thirty to ninety days on some of them. And so they mark their prices up substantially just so they know if they do get it that they're that they're going to be able to pay for it. Something we're working through, nothing to be concerned about, but that's it's a growing pain right now.
When that does happen, that will change traffic flow in that street for a while, won't it?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Guadalupe River Crossing. It's the same issue that we're we're waiting for pipes there. That pipe's been on order forever. Various particular kind of pipe. It hangs under a bridge. It can flex and move. And we haven't heard from the from the contractor when it's going to be available.
I think you should get the right pipe. I think we should wait for the right pipe.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. I agree. Nap Road Force Main Gravity Sewer. That is going to come from Nap Road there by Chili's all the way down to Jefferson Street. We're in the design phases of that. We've been working very closely with Freezing Nichols. We have our alignment figured out. And we got the flows, the depths. We're looking at conflicting utilities right now. And so we're probably about seventy percent drawings, I would think, somewhere in there. So we'll get we're about ninety percent on the drawings there, so we'll be ready. Hopefully, after that, if we do get some stabilization in the market, we'll be able to award that as well.
So what you'll see on on the comments with this one, this is the remainder of the Legion Water Development Board funds. So you likely won't see a contract for construction until probably late spring, early summer because we have to, you know, we did the environmental first component of the environmental in October. Essentially, we're going to we're we're here in about six months lag on approval to proceed forward. We're going to try to bump that up as quick as possible. And so right now, what I've got is kind of that that summer timeframe. Hopefully, that resolves a lot of the pipe issues, but we've also got the Water Development Board clearances that we have to.
So they you're talking when you say waiting for approval, it's Water Development Board approval?
To to proceed for the funding allotment. You know, we've been approved to proceed with the project, but they haven't gone through EID, you know, which is environmental clearances and all the different steps that we have to proceed on these before we can actually go out to bid.
The Tranquility Island twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. There is a Park Master Plan meeting tomorrow night at the Deeter Center and they're going to go over a lot of that. And so we'll see how that, you know, where that all kind of shakes out in their master plan right now. But there some of those projects are we're working on them and they're going to organize them through that master planning effort, so more to be seen there. On twenty-eight, the Tech Stop Transportation Alternative. That is the funding agreement, the bond. From Tech Stop, we've gotten awarded that or we have, excuse me, we've been notified that we will get awarded. We haven't got the actual money yet, but we will be.
Wait, which one?
It's for the for the bond, Tech Stop Transportation Alternative Program, where we're going to be putting in the sidewalks from Colley Wesley Drive and Hill Country Drive.
That's one where we had the two schools and then the Sydney Baker Bridge, correct?
Yes.
It was a bigger project than that. Remember, it was really that entire area.
Yeah.
And so the scope of that was reduced to make it more in line with what Tech Stop was looking to fund.
Right, yeah. There was three applications. You're you're correct. There was the two schools and then the bridge as Mr. Hoppy.
Which extended.
Right. And and so prior to award of this project, Tech Stop had requested us to essentially take all on system anything on Tech Stop roadways off of of our application. The bridge improvements, the sidewalks, that's something that they're working on. We're continuing the discussions with the district office on on getting, you know, still getting those projects done. But this at least got us these three streets for for city streets to provide sidewalk.
Do you know why they requested that? Just curious.
My understanding, it's a lot of internal discussion with so there's the traffic element on the bridge itself in in the age of the bridge, but there's also the signals, as you've seen throughout town and actually the subsequent item here, they're doing a lot of signal improvements. A big bulk of that was was essentially stuff that they had already identified in in their district component. And so we were, you know, if you recall, I guess for the past year, year and a half, we were asking district to, you know, contribute the local match as as their allotment for the signal upgrades and stuff like that. They also did not really like the drainage on the east side of sixteen, south of the bridge. We were looking to have sidewalk connecting, you know, the whole downtown corridor, the medical complex. So there was a variety of, you know, oppo- opponents to or components to including that is their their Tech Stop projects. I think they're looking to possibly do that in-house design in the next couple of years.
I think they're also looking at spreading funding across the state. Remember, there's a statewide competitive grant. They had, I think, forty-six million for two-hundred-and-fifty million worth of projects. And so, you know, they're trying to spread the love across the whole state.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no no changes in Wayne in lane width.
This is specifically for sidewalks on these three internal streets.
So we submitted a revised application or amended one and then they accepted that when we took out those other locations. Okay.
Yes, for essentially enrollment doing city streets, nothing on on Tech Stop road. There was no lane width alterations or anything of that nature coming from our project.
Yeah, right.
Now, Tech Stop.
May do their own thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last one we'll talk about tonight is the signal improvements. You've seen that around town where you have them on Plaza Drive and then Five Points now here on Water Street. It's going to be one more signal improvement out on twenty-seven. I think it's five thirty-four twenty-seven, so you'll see that as well. And what they're doing there is they're changing. They're putting mast arms instead of the wired cables. And the wires tend to blow and turn and things like that, so kind of a little bit more new, modern look at some of those.
Well, how many expenses associated with that? Do that's all Tech Stop?
They're all Tech Stops and really a pretty good improvement. So over probably a million and a half dollars that they're putting into those five intersections, so. And they should be better synchronized now because it's not just the mast arms, it's also the computer synchronization with their whole system.
So is that what? I mean, there's there's a camera up there.
It's a it's a radar.
Yeah.
A radar, okay. That helps with how much traffic is there to go through the intersection is?
It's the way they count the cars when they stop, so they'll see how many cars are sitting there. They're not really counting them. They're not looking at license plates. They're looking at physical vehicles and saying, hey, do we need to change the light? The more cars you have stopped up. It works on a couple of different algorithms, too, from the how many cars you're seeing, how many cars are passing, and then also synchronization with the other lights. So they'll know, hey, if if there aren't any cars, we want to stay on the synchronization. But on the side streets, they need to know if a car is there or not. And so then it 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 runs through a whole bunch of bunch of data as it is, but those are just to see if cars are sitting there or not.
Okay. I mean, it I think they've done a great job everywhere except Water Street and twenty seven, Five Points
Yeah.
and traffic going east and west, you just two or three cars just barely get through a yellow light.
Well, the same thing happens, though, also on Sydney Baker and twenty-seven. Anybody that's turning left, I mean, you better go quicker. You're not getting through there. I I sat through four lights just trying to get here this afternoon.
This is this is a minor matter, but I didn't realize it had been been this long. But Tech Stop had whoever they contracted with had a tractor out here on Water Street in front of the Humble Fork Restaurant for three weeks. And that sure does hurt business. And, you know, I didn't think about it at the time. I would have raised the issue, but we need to be careful about that kind of thing and hurting our businesses.
Okay, very good. Yeah, the the I've been I've been watching that particular one and there's a lot of things that we would do differently if it was our contractor.
Do we have any? Say, yeah. Is there anything we can do?
We we know Tech Stop very well and they'll usually listen to us. And if we actually did, one of their the guy that's doing some of the traffic control was sitting out there in his police car with no cones or anything around him. He's like, hey, I gotta, he can't do that, even if he's in a car with all the flashing lights. He's got to be behind the those cones and he's got to be protected and all that stuff. Because it is, you know, there's a lot of people going through there and we don't want, you know, we're we're just trying to help. But do we have any any official say in in the way they do it, very minimal on their road there?
Well, one thing that concerned me was the individuals who had police on their, you know, vests and a couple of cars sit police on the side. It's not it's not KPD, but sometimes they were if people thought they were KPD, it wouldn't have looked very good on on KPD. But again, I know we got a limited influence on that kind of thing, but.
He was he was the guy that I wanted to go talk to down there, but he moved his car before I got there, so.
He knew you were coming.
Yes, sir. So that is kind of gives you an update of where we are in our CIP list. If you have any questions or?
Yeah, and it's probably more for EA, but and you didn't touch on it, but it's just a question that's popped into my head a couple of times because of questions I've received about the project, and I think I may have brought this up before. But I'm just curious. I had someone ask me about the Ridgeland project and if there was like a website, if there was a way just to know how someone that might want to know more about the project or potentially be a new homeowner in that area. Can we get some information from Lennar about how they plan to 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 roll that out? Like when they, you know, is it going to be something that they that they're going to spec the homes out? Are these going to be just lots that, you know?
Well, people are wanting to.
Dedicated website?
They're wanting to know if they have to get on a list in order to get one of these houses because we all know that they're gonna, you know, they're gonna get sucked up.
Too. I would like that information to be widely available because I I don't want someone that is an investor to roll in and learn something that, you know, the people we want to be moving into those homes may not have the opportunity to know about. So I'd like it to be a pretty level playing field, you know?
Yeah, we'll we'll make some contacts and
That'll be good.
I don't think they've released any marketing materials yet just because they're not ready. For the the vast majority of their site development process will continue through the first half, really three-quarters of twenty-twenty-two. And then they'll start going vertical with houses, so but I I suspect.
It'd be nice to know.
But yeah, we'll we'll get some a better understanding of what their marketing timeline is.
Someone that wants to start like maybe, you know, pre-qualifying for a loan or how fast are these going to go? Or or just just some general info would be would be really, you know, would be really good to have.
Let me say one more word about the bridge project. I got a lot of letters, as I'm sure other councilmembers did, about changing the width of the lanes and and making that more safe for walkers. Had one individual say the city council ought to stand up for the real citizens. And when I asked him who the real citizens were, he said the people that drive their vehicles across that bridge, people that walk are not real citizens. And we've we've got an issue in terms of walkability and safety across there. And it's it's not going to it's not going to go away. It's going to increase. So I know, you know, we're not solving it at this point, but I hope I hope we can at some point.
Certainly still a Carroll twenty-fifty action item, and we're going to continue to look for ways to to help alleviate and and increase pedestrian access.
Yeah, good, good.
Thank you, Stuart.
I have one more question. Did we touch on anything with the Doyle community and the sidewalks that were put in there? Is that part of this?
It's really part of the street reconstruction effort. The vast majority of those sidewalks are, you know, enhanced sidewalk elements, basically. And certainly can touch on that.
So did you have a particular question?
I do. Well, I've been contacted, I don't know if any other councilor has, but by a lot of citizens in that community and they're really concerned about how wide the sidewalks are and it's taking up a lot of space where the street used to be and where the home where people used to be able to park outside their houses. And so that's taken up a lot of space. So can we speak to why they're so wide?
But so if you recall, in the Doyle Community Development Plan, the essentially Town Creek Connection, granted, this is, you know, the theoretical connection at at this point, but, you know, there is a possibility of connection in the River Trail. So essentially, that is a shared use path, not just. But, you know, there is a possibility of connection in River Trail. Uh, so essentially that i- is a shared use path, not just a sidewalk. Uh, so we're looking at bicycle and, and pedestrian activity along that sidewalk, down West Barnett to Pascal, down Pascal to McFarland, McFarland to Clay Street, to eventually tie into the CUDS development, uh, and, and get you downtown. Uh, so that's, that's why you have an eight-foot versus a five-foot sidewalk. Uh, and, and that's, that's where, you know, long-term plan, again, that River Trail connection exists. Uh, right now, we just gotta take the first step and first step was with this re- reconstruction of the streets to get that sidewalk in, in there. And yes, it is a reduction, but it's actually, uh, it's a reduction from what they're used to, but it's very similar to, uh, our, our street standards. I mean, that, that's our, you know, standard tree width across town.
But it wasn't so much the width of the street because I was contacted to it. It was just the fact that that sidewalk was so wide. So this will help. So actually Barnett though would be the only street that would have that, the extra wide. The others, any work that's done will be the regular and normal.
Right, just like what we did on Webster, up to the park. It would be that five-foot normal, uh, you know.
That's one I heard about too.
Yeah, so.
Just comes down to the Doyle Center and so we wanted to have a plenty of access where there was a good kind of a community area where they could walk, walk on that wider sidewalk. But not all of them will be that wide. Just the one on Barnett that comes down Pascal and then across over to, uh, to McFarland, so.
And you may remember that was the direction that the neighborhood provided via the Doyle Area Community Plan and the Framework Plan for Transportation and having that backbone, uh, really having that enhanced pedestrian corridor along Barnett and along McFarland and along Pascal, uh, to give folks, you know, kind of those, um, sort of arterial sidewalks, so to speak.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Guillermo? I'm sorry, I should say Mr. Garcia.
Just waiting for Martin to put up the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Martin. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and I wanna wish y'all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year since this is probably the last time I get to see y'all until January. So, but today we're here to talk about employing empowerment, what we're doing as a city to empower employees, which happen to be the greatest resource engine that we have. And so this, uh, from an agenda standpoint, we're gonna talk a little bit about City University. We're gonna talk a little bit about Leadership Academy and, uh, the Lean Six Sigma Program. And so with that, let's talk a little bit about City University.
Yeah, this is before. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I think everybody's monitor is off. You can turn it on if you need to at the bottom right.
Ready to go? Um, so one of the things that we analyze City University and try to figure out ways to make it a bigger resource for, for our employees. And so we've heard some of the comments and some of the communications through surveys and direct one-on-one conversation and through, uh, which I'll talk a little bit more, Board of Regents. And so one of the things that we wanna change is the way we conduct training in the tracks that we have right now. Another thing is to update the curriculum. Uh, some of the curriculum is a little dated, but also trying to expand that curriculum. So there's, it affects and touches a lot more than just your standard, uh, leadership-type training, your, your Excel-type training and so forth. Expand it out a little bit more. And then, of course, do some new employee surveys. Now, when I say new employee surveys, it's more about the class themselves. Once you've attended a class, what the, what, what the results of that survey is gonna be and get that feedback. So we can either change the class or make improvements and then also do an annual survey so that everybody, everybody can give feedback as to the overall direction of City University. So we've done that as well.
Guillermo, on the curriculum, is that a standard or is that something that you develop or?
Something that I've kinda developed, but also taken from different cities that I've been at and just what's out in, in the market.
So it's not something that automatically gets updated and, and, and pushed out to you? Okay.
No, you have to basically go out there and find it and, and either purchase it or find something that you can, uh, develop along with it. So, um, but City University right now, the way it's focused is that general focus. And so when we implemented City University a few years back, the goal was to try to just build a general consensus of curriculum that addresses the general issues of the day. And so that's, that was our focus and that's why we set up four different tracks. We have the Step Track, which deals with basic training, kinda the, uh, first aid training to culture and some other things that you would consider just basic type training of the organization. Then you have the Technology Track that focuses in on like, uh, as I mentioned earlier, Excel, Word, GIS, uh, some ENCODE and trying to give a roundabout way of training on the different technologies that we have at the City of Curville. Uh, and then leadership, anything that's considered leadership, uh, that anybody can attend that specific type of leadership that will hopefully enhance their leadership skills or develop them or build upon what they've already have. And then lastly, we have the Innovation Track, which deals with, uh, Lean Six Sigma, business planning, strategic planning and those type of tools.
Okay, STEP is an acronym for something. What is that?
Standards, Tone, Expectations, and Pace.
Standards, Tone, Expectations, and Pace. Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that we wanna do is change our curriculum to be more employee-focused. And so we've identified three areas. One is an orientation, and this is not to take over what HR is doing, but complement what they're doing. So there's certain things that we wanna try to adopt there and, and that right now is just complete concept. We don't even know what that's gonna look like. Uh, but the basic one is, and so what we wanna do is work with the departments, work with the individuals to say, okay, this position requires this type of training. And so we'll be able to develop or identify that training and find how we can give that training to be for that specific individual. And then they'll be able to choose electives. And from those electives, they could be anything that they want, from leadership courses to, uh, Excel courses or anything that's just gonna allow them to develop themselves and prepare them for that next step of being a future leader of the organization. It's gonna take a lot of work, but I think we're, uh, we're looking at some, uh, learning management systems. And one we've already looked at is called Benchmark, and so we're gonna try to implement that and use that system. And they have a lot of curriculum. They have a lot of things in there that we can pu- potentially pull from, so that'll help us. Uh, and so, excuse me, one of the things that we also have is the Board of Regents, the City University Board of Regents. And their purpose is as an advisory capacity, right? They're, they're to help advise City University, provide general direction of where we wanna go and be that voice of the customer. In this case, the voice of the customer is our employees. And so they're, again, charged with identifi- identification and review of the programming, identify opportunities for improvement and also assist in deployment of the organization or a high-performing organization. So with the Board of Regents, we meet on a quarterly basis, uh, but because we're making some changes and wanting to get ahead, uh, we've met twice this quarter. Uh, but next quarter, we'll be meeting in February timeframe to, to revise or review what we've already tried to implement and then just kinda build from there.
Who's on that board?
So, great question. So current board members. So the current board, board members are Brandon Kelly, Charvy, uh, Curtis Thompson, David Barrera, Donna Boyer, Jeremy Hughes, Rosa Ledezma, and Trina Rodriguez. So you can see it's, it's, uh, n- not just specific individuals, but we're trying to get a broad, uh, na- uh, broader scope of individuals from different parts of the organization that can contribute to City University as a whole.
So you're not on the, this board?
Well, I am, but I, I put, I put the, the members of the organization. I thought they were the more critical ones because they're the voice, right? I'm just the facilitator at this point in time.
How did these members get selected?
So we brought it up to our senior executive group and from there, it was just kind of a, hey, who do you think would be, be a best fit? And from, everybody in the senior executive group nominated some names and, uh, everybody agreed to these individuals and that's how we ended up with them.
We do try to rotate this, this, uh, you know, both so it doesn't become a burden for those individuals long-term and to bring new voices onto that Board of Regents. We, the, the, really the purpose for having this is to make sure that we are making sure City University is relevant, right? And that, uh, we're providing the programming and the educational pieces that departments need and that we can continue to train our workforce and grow, grow those individuals and grow their abilities. And so, uh, it's, needs to be organic on what that educational piece is coming from. And, and some departments may have different needs than other departments. And so, uh, that's why we really wanted a broad swath of, of folks that are at different levels in the organization.
So the next subject we'll cover is Leadership Academy. Um, this is our second year of doing Leadership Academy and the basic purpose is to provide leadership training skills, provide some networking opportunities for, uh, individuals that are on Leadership Academy. You'd be surprised how many times you'll find where, oh, I've never had a chance to talk to somebody from the PD or talk to somebody from Public Works or the library. And so it gives them an opportunity to network. And then you have those connections. So when somebody, let's say at the library, needs something, they know exactly who to go to now because they've had that interaction with them. I know we're a small organization, but you'd be surprised sometimes how siloed we can be. And we're trying to break those silos, uh, that we have in the organization. The next thing is part of Leadership Academy is they have a ment- we have a mentorship, uh, component of it. And that is basically those individuals that are on Leadership Academy are responsible for selecting, uh, one of the leadership team members and they become their mentors in, in that regard. And so what, what ends up happening is from a mentor standpoint is that the mentee brings the different topics to the mentors. Not the mentor's job to talk about different topics. It's the mentee's job, right? And that's part of being the leader as well, is being able to, to define different topics and talk about different things. And so these topics can range from personal to work-related to specific leadership issues that they're dealing with or, or whatever it may be. So it's just another, uh, a way of learning from your peers and others that have been in the organization a little bit longer than, than some.
Does this learning go on, um, during business hours or are these classes that, that you take after hours or?
So it, it is a class that we meet once a month. So it's every, uh, it's the second Friday of every month and, and it is pretty much a whole-day class.
Okay.
So this is a ten-month, tw- ten-to-twelve-month program. Where they, it, it's a one-day a month, basically. Uh, and, and it's, uh, relatively small group. It's pretty intimate. It's about a, it's about a ten-person group.
Well, I, I have the list of names up here in a minute, but we are a ten-member group at this point in time. Last year, we had, uh, fourteen. And now we have ten. I thought fourteen was a little too big, um, and ten's just about the right size. You get a little bit more intimate and, and you get a better pace of the class itself. But this'll give you an idea of the classes that we have, uh, scheduled for the Leadership Academy. The ones that you see checkmarked are the ones that we've already conducted. So for example, the City, City of Curville Culture, that's basically talking about what we do as a city, our mission statement, our vision, talking about Curville twenty-fifty, talking about STEP, you know, standards, ta- uh, tone, expectations, and pace. Uh, talking about that. We also wanna give them a DISC assessment. And part of that is also so that they can learn that not every individual is gonna be, you can, you can't approach the same individual or another individual the way, same way you would wanna approach yourself. And so you gotta learn, understand the, the behaviors and the personalities of others, members of the organization. And it, and as you become a leader, you have to be very conscious of those personalities. And so it's, it's another way of just giving them more tools. Uh, servant leadership is another tool, uh, or another training that we conducted. And this was conducted, so we have a mixture of individuals within the organization that are doing these tra- uh, providing these trainings. And then we have some consultants as well that come in and do this. Uh, most of this web- webinars, but you can see we've done servant leadership and we've done time management. And then next month, we'll be doing basic budgeting. And that is Julie coming in actually and talking about budgeting and what our process is for that so that they have a general understanding. Project management, uh, I'll probably be doing that one, but I'm trying to wrangle Charvy into, to doing that one. Um, and then so forth and all the other classes. I won't go through each one of them, but you can see that it's, it's a robust list of classes to try to give to our future leaders or current leaders in.
I'm curious, what is team building through chemistry?
So that's a new one. I found that one online and it is gonna be conducted by Core Insights. And so the idea is trying to figure out, kinda like the DISC assessment, trying to figure out what each personality is and trying to figure out how do you mesh everybody together so that you have a cohesive unit. So I'm interested in that. I've never seen that before, so I, I'm, I'm a little interested.
Let me say, um, I love what you're doing with this. I really do. And I look at some of these, uh, topics. I think it's just great. Like on project management, uh, that is so crucial and, and so training in that area and critical thinking. Uh, the other thing I would say is John Anderson, who's been the Director of Economic Development in five states, was talking to me about, uh, the potential of people in an organization realizing that they can move in that organization. They can get training and move up. It just, what, what a, you know, huge motivation that is. And so this is, this is great.
Well, and like I said earlier, I mean, our greatest resource engine that we have as a city is our employees. You know, they're the ones that make the machinery work. They're the ones that make the software work in a certain way. And so it's important that we invest time into them and, and the education that they need to be able to perform optimally.
Wait, you're supposed to say the greatest resource is the city council.
Secondary, maybe. Um, so this is our, our fiscal year twenty-one class members. Um, not gonna go through each individual name, but the biggest, most important thing is you can see they come from different parts of the organization, from Public Works, the Fire Department, Engineering, Development Services, the Library, Utility Building, and the City Secretary's Office. So it's a big complement of the organization that attends, uh, City, uh, Leadership Academy. Now, like, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we did wanna do was make the class a little bit smaller, to make it a little bit more intimate, and that's what we've done. And so with this year, we have ten members and again, from across the, the, the organization, Public Works, Parks, Development Services, uh, the garage, municipal court. And so we're trying to get as many people as possible, but also trying to keep it where it's intimate and, you know, give them the time to actually ask questions and network with each other and participate in, in a much more intimate setting.
You're, you're building the chemistry just about that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And so one of the things with Leadership Academy that we incorporated this fiscal year, uh, not the, the last fiscal year, is site visits. And so what we've done is create, uh, uh, site visits to City Hall. And when we were here at City Hall, uh, Mr. Hoppy came in and talked about his role as a city manager, the city manager's office. And we had Ms. Meisner come in and talk about HR, talk about risk. The city secretary's office came in, Shelley, uh, and talked about her role. And then, uh, then the next visit that we had, uh, for Octo- uh, for November was, uh, Ashley. Uh, she did a wonderful job in coming in and presenting, uh, what she does, her leadership style, the way, her commitment to the organization and what she wants to accomplish. And then we were able to go do different site visits. So we went to the sports complex, we went to, uh, the golf course. We went to the tennis center. We went, we drove by some of the parks. We didn't stop at every single one of them. Um, but we drove by some of the parks, we went out to Shrenner Park. And so the, these are places that some of the individuals have never been to. You know, it was like, uh, we have one of our library members, uh, I know he's new to the organization still, but he's been here a year and he had never been to some of these locations. Uh, this month, this past Friday, I don't have the pictures out because by the time I had, uh, finished this, um, I pretty much, uh, it was done with the PowerPoint. But we visited the water production plant and that's another location where many of our members have never been. Um, and Grant, of course, does a wonderful job for that and, uh, Mr. Barron did a wonderful job in court, helping us coordinate that visit. And so it, it was a wonderful trip and we learned a lot. And so, uh, the idea is to continue that process. Uh, I can't remember what we're doing in, in January, but I know the next ones, we're gonna go to the, uh, water distribution. We're gonna go to the garage. We're gonna go to Development Services and we're gonna do, try to visit as many locations as possible. So, uh, Lean Six Sigma. So Lean Six Sigma, so we kinda took a little bit hiatus and it, and it was mostly because of the COVID and then, but we still tried to do some projects and complete them. As y'all, many of y'all saw and participated in our project report out over the summer. But one of the things I, uh, we're gonna do is gonna open it up again for registration and, uh, we'll get a, a new list of names, uh, to come in and be green belts. Um, my goal is to try to open up, uh, before the end of this week so that we have a class, uh, ready to go in either late January or early February. Um, and then one of the things I wanna do is revamp the focus of our Lean Six Sigma program. And this is something I've actually been wanting to do for several years, even before I came to the City of Curville. Um, and what I've been wanting to do is because of the, the nature of the projects that we do is really focus it more from the heavy, uh, statistical side of Six Sigma, which you get into, you know, uh, uh, NOVA studies, you get into design of experiments and a whole bunch of other things, is really focusing on the lean side. And on the lean side, you're do- dealing more with process flow. You're dealing with trying to identify the, the, the non-value-added process steps within that particular process. And we've already kinda been doing that, but I really wanna just focus in on those pieces, still teach some of the statistical tools, but not the, the in- inferential statistics, just to say. And, and really get more into the, uh, descriptive sty- uh, descriptive statistics just so that you can scope out a project, but for the most part, really focus in on the non-value-added steps of a process and, and get to what we call in the Lean Six Sigma world Kaizen events. And so a Kaizen event is basically a one-day to five-day event where you go in, you evaluate the process, you take it apart, and then you put it back together better than what you had founded. And you try to do that in a limited amount of time versus where some of our Lean Six Sigma projects have gone, you know, a couple of months because you're trying to collect data and trying to really. Versus where some of our Lean Six Sigma projects have gone, you know, a couple of months, because you're trying to collect data and trying to really scope it out. And so that's kind of my focus where I, I, I want to do, and like I said, I've been wanting to do it for some time. It's just I thought now would be the perfect time to do it.
And is that done in teams or is it, is the whole group a team?
No, it's done in teams, because every individual that comes in will come in with a project in their specific area.
You know, I, I thoroughly enjoyed uh seeing the employees present uh what they had done with those, with that project. And it was very, very exciting, and you could tell they were excited about it as well.
Absolutely. It, it, it's, it's, it's an awesome thing when you get to empower employees, and then they go out and change. Uh the processes, but they, not only do they change the processes, but they also end up changing the culture of that particular process that they deal with. And so it really empowers them to wanna do more and change and improve the organization as a whole.
Do you, do you, do you have a way of softening up the department head when the employee says, I wanna change the process?
Well, that's why you get them involved from the beginning, you know, with them helping to identify the project. And then the way I wanna change and revamp the focus, they'll be part of the, uh, uh, the, the, the Kaizen event. And be part of that identifying uh the, the non-valuated waste in the process. So they're not just out as visual participants, they're actually participating in the actual project improvement.
Yeah, I mean, I see where this is streamlined, and then there's this, there's an end result that is better. Than what it used to be. Do you have a way of measuring that, or is there a cost savings or something associated with that process improvement?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we always try to do is find a project that has a metric, and, and that's why sometimes in the Lean Six, uh sometimes our projects took a little bit longer. Because there were no metrics, so now we're trying to collect the data so that we can establish a metric. And so part of the make, which is define, measure, analyze, improve and control, that last phase is controls. How do you control that process going forward? Because you don't wanna just change it, walk away, and then it goes right back to where it was. So you wanna continue measuring that process, uh whether it's a new metric that we created or a metric that currently exists. So we wanna measure that, and then from that, we try to calculate what the cost savings is from where we were to where we're at. And that's where that number that you see up there right now, the savings, you know, we, we've had hard dollar savings of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Soft, soft, soft dollar savings, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, total hu- uh total savings of about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That we've been able to accumulate right now. And some of the hard dollar savings is actual budget do- dollars that get impacted. But we don't, we try to leave those budget numbers or those budget, uh tho- those savings within the department, because then they can reallocate them to something else. Uh what they need, and the soft dollars, of course, you're dealing with time savings, you know.
Do you have a reward system for, say, the best of the best, whoever came up with the best process improvement that impacted the company?
Not necessarily in, in what you're thinking, but we do have is a certification program. So when that green belt leads their team to improve that particular project, they will get a certification pay that, that's good for a year. Or if they continue doing some additional projects, um and so it's about seventy-five dollars a, a month.
Okay, so there is some sort of reward.
There, there is some sort of rewards. For that individual, uh not necessarily for the whole team, but that, for the individual that, that led, led that team to the green belt.
Well, certainly you saw the pride they all brought to the table when they provided those presentations uh to council and to their peers about their projects. And so it, uh they, pretty empowered group.
Oh yeah. Are you still working with Peterson Health on their Lean Six Sigma?
No, um matter of fact, uh I don't, I haven't followed up with, um, oh, I can't remember her name right now. Um but I haven't followed up with her, they had gone through the progress or the process of the Barge Award, and that's what they were really focusing in on. And I know they were, they received, I believe it was just a progress level award. I hadn't really kept up with it, but I think they, they were in the process of trying to go for the, the Quality Texas Award again.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the good work.
Thank you. Alright, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Um that we go into executive session for five five one point oh seven one, five five one point oh seven two. Five five one point oh eight seven and five five one point oh seven four.
Alright, okay. Uh there's a motion, you got a second, all in favor, I've been on with raised hands. Alright, so let's head upstairs.